School Board meeting for June 21st to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Lynn Blad, seconded by Sturt Event to approve the agenda for June 21st, 2016. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up, we have spotlight on a recognition, beginning with the Employee of the Month.
It's my pleasure to introduce Sue Redfield as the June Employee of the Month. Sue is a food service worker, nutritional service worker at the high school. She has worked in the Fridley School District for 17 years. For every single minute of those 17 years, she has taken great pride in every item she creates and/or prepares for the students and staff. She's a true professional, always wanting to make improvements and always offering to do more than asked. Sue is truly a person of integrity and demonstrates this every day. She wants every customer to have a great experience, so she greets them with a warm smile and a greeting at breakfast and lunch. She understands the meaning of consumer service and serves it up daily. She's not a fan of earbuds, however, because they prevent students from learning to engage with people. We are blessed to have Sue Redfield as our Nutritional Service Department, and she is a very special lady. So congratulations, Sue.
Thank you. Next up would be our School Board Scholarship recipient.
Yes, in your board packet, I would like you to draw your attention to pages 11 and 12, and this is page 12. This year, we have kind of updated our scholarships through the Fridley Schools Foundation. This year, we gave out over, the foundation gave out over $100,000 in scholarships, but your scholarship of $1,600 from the school board was given to us, Lexa Scott. And here is the thank you note that we sent. And so I just wanted you to be able to see this publicly of this young lady. Thanks to David Weber, who also took all the pictures of the students as they came off the stage. So it was a very good evening, thanks to the foundation and the many, many partners that helped give that $100,000 to our graduating seniors.
Yes, thank you to all those donors who did that and to the foundation for taking care of those funds for us. Next up would be the final discussion regarding graduation for the class of 2016.
Yes, class of 2016 graduated on June 2nd. There were 118 graduates, including the ALC graduates. Thirteen were full IB diploma candidates. Six college, that means that they took six college-level courses and examinations over the two years. Twenty-six were IB scholars. That was four or more IB diploma classes with the external examinations. One student graduated with an associate degree from North Hennepin, and 20 students graduated with honors, which meant that their GPA was 3.25 to 3.45. Twenty-six students graduated with high honors, 3.5 to 3.74, and 31 students with highest honors, which is a 3.75 and a minimum of three DP classes with external examinations. It was a wonderful evening. You know, this is kind of the pinnacle of the year for us, and thanks to the board members who also participated in this. And it was a very special evening, being the last graduation of both Principal Van Gorp and Principal Smith.
All right, thank you. Next up, we move on to superintendent and staff reports, beginning with presentation by Cindy McKay on Stop On Red in the school bus safety program.
Good evening. I'm Cindy McKay, Transportation Coordinator for Fridley Public Schools here, and I'm here to update you on our poster contest that we did this year. We have 20 winners that we have district level, and then they moved on to the state level. Here at Fridley, we have a very good showing. We have, actually, there is, am I pushing that? There is, we have three, first, second, third in each grade for the district level, and then we have six winners that went on to the state level and one at state level. And actually, we have two winners that are going to go on to Nationals. As you know, last year, Akshu went on and went to Nationals and won at Nationals. He's in there again, and he's going to be sent on to Nationals. And this is his little brother, actually, in kindergarten, and he won. And so he gets to go to the Twins game, the State Patrol point, Twins game. We had Officer Lieutenant Brian Rue from the State Patrol came out and then gave them their awards. He's a big guy, so it was really kind of really impressive for them. They gave a school bus full of money and all their awards. Stevenson took all the kindergarten ones. Hayes, this is, is it first grader, Miko? They were just the eyes on the kids to see him giving them the awards. It's just, he's really, very nice. Stevenson, first grader, Alyssa? Which is so neat with this contest, to see what they see in the school bus. That's what I love to do. I just love to see what they see. Ivy Tassel, out of Hayes, she's a first grader. Brian tried to get her to smile, and she just didn't want to smile at him. She tried really hard. Hickamah did a very nice job with this, out of Hayes, second grader. And like, these all went to state level. At the state level this year, we kind of broadened our spectrum, because this is Alyssa Martin, a second grader, and she has a sibling also that won. But we went online voting, so the voting was a little tougher this year. They had more out there voting for people. Nadia Carpenter from Hayes, third grade. This is a little guy from Stevenson, third grade, Hudson. They were just so anxious to come down to the hall, down to get their awards. It's just, they just couldn't wait to get that. This is Ashley Anderson, third grader from Hayes. And Omeida is, he was pretty, as you can see, the smile on his face was just nonstop, so he just totally was enjoying himself and did a really nice job.
The ties are nice touches.
Yeah, yeah, he was all good stuff.
Good artist.
This is Sawyer Taylor Lee from Hayes, and she's a fourth grader. And she was really excited, because she found out that she can do this in middle school, which excites me to get more middle school kids involved in this. This is Vanessa, a fourth grader. Stevenson, Nala from Hayes, another fourth grader. And then we have, these, this is, we were able to put some kids into the special needs area after consulting with their parents. This is Kadir Davis from Hayes, and this actually is going to Nationals. His is going to go to Nationals for us. And Madison did a really nice job from Hayes. I just wanted to get the opportunity for these kids to be able to have that opportunity also. And this is Alex Manders. And if you see the little twin emblem on there, that means they get to go to the Minnesota Twins with the State Patrol on August 11th. The family does. This is Akshu's one this year. As you can see, it's very good, and so we are very positive that he will place again. But Edwin Norton, another middle school. I got two middle schools this year, so hopefully we're gaining ground, but they're getting excitement out of that. But that, in August 11th, we'll go to the Minnesota State Patrol, a Twins game, a bus ride, the family gets to go. They get t-shirts, the game, a meal, and it's just a really good time. And then they get to go on the field. The little kids get to go on the field, and they put them on the Metrodome. It's pretty exciting for them to be able to go down there. So, and I just truly love this contest. It allows us to, give us our K3, which is mandated to do training twice for our K3 kiddos, and we do that twice with this, and a little bit of fun with the poster contest. So, the state does a really nice job with this, and Fridley is a very, we took a third of all the winners in the state, so we did a very nice job.
Now, is it up to the kids? Is it optional for them to participate in the poster contest?
K3 years, they have to, and we have to, because we have the mandate to teach them, so we do.
But after that?
After that, if they want to, yes, right. I'd like to thank Voits Bus and for Student Champlin and North Sales, Central Sales. They gave us the little school buses and the money. And then Lieutenant Brian Rue, like I said, he came out and gave the awards. It was really, his presence was just so neat to see them kids see him, and you know, it was really cool. So, and next year's theme is My Driver, My Safety Hero, so I don't know what we'll get out of that next year. They have to have a bus on them. They have to have a bus on them. There has to be a bus there. So I don't know if we'll have wings on the buses or what, but it's, like I said, I truly enjoy this part of my job. I love it. It just, kids can learn and have fun at the same time. Any other questions?
Keep it up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Cindy.
Our next item up for staff reports is a 2016-17 budget presentation. Mr. Hammer.
Yeah, so my name's Matthew Hammer. I'm the Director of Finance at Fridley Public Schools, and I get to follow up the art show with the adopted budget for FY 2016-17. So we've got some good stuff to go over tonight. This is our budget planning foundation. It's things, or it's the board foundation of what we look at and what we guide our work around as a district. And if we start on the bottom and we work up foundationally, we're working from improving parent and school partnerships, building financial stability, maintaining a safe and school, a safe and positive learning environment, and using the most effective instructional strategies, ultimately to make sure that our students are performing at high levels and achieving academic achievement. So that picture on the right there is a picture of three of our outstanding students that are signing letters of intent on full rides, our 2016 grads. Oh, what did I do? There we go. So enrollment, enrollment drives everything we do as a school district, drives the funding that we receive for schools in the state of Minnesota. And here's a picture of our Veterans Day program of our middle school students. It's an annual program where our students and staff honor our veterans and their service for our country. One of the good examples of student community partnership that we see in our schools every day. Enrollment, where have we been? Where are we going? So in 2012-13, 2013-14, we had flat to stable enrollment, and we've been on a slow uptick ever since. So in 2015-16, we're projecting to have about a 20-student increase over our 14-15 actual, and we're looking at about a 38-student increase over what our revised budget is for 16-17, setting our number around 3,025 students. This is the breakdown by grade level. Our K4s are Hayes and Stevenson Elementary, 5/8ths Middle School, and 9/12s are High School, and that makeup of where the enrollment is in our school buildings. General unassigned fund balance is the measure of our health as a district. And as we look at our general unassigned expenditures and our general unassigned fund balance, our percentage, we've been, we've been growing. And our board policy is 5% to 8%, and we're projecting to be at the end of 15-16, roughly about 7.26%, and looking at a small uptick as we go into 16-17 at 7.31%. That trend line is showing where we've been. We were back into fund balance policy as of 14-15 and continue to stay there as we move into 16-17. Hitting the wrong buttons. Okay, so here's our revenues by source. We have been fairly consistent here. We haven't seen the state aid shifts that we were seeing in the 2010-11, 11-12 era, and so we've had a fairly stable makeup of our revenues by source. About 84% of our revenues come through state aids, largely made up of our basic aid revenue, special education compensatory aids. The other piece that drives it is our local revenues, which is made up of fees and our local taxes. And the other, smaller portion is our federal revenues, which make up just over 3% of our revenue at about $1,279,000 of federal revenues. That decrease that we see here, this is our 15 actual, was the PEP grant that we had historically had back in 15. We didn't have that in 16, but that's what you see as a decrease there. General fund budget, our unassigned revenues are projected to be $32,171,151, and our unassigned expenditures are projected to be $32,82317, which puts us at a surplus of just shy of $90,000 as we project where we're going to end at the end of 16-17. That again puts us right in the middle to upper end of our board policy at 7.31%. Here's our makeup. This is the programmatic makeup of our general fund expenditures by each program. I think this illustration is a better illustration. 80% of our funding, 80 cents on a dollar goes directly to support students, and the other 20% is made up of administration district support and site buildings. It's something we strive to stay at, and it puts us at or above where we benchmark with the rest of school districts around the state. The large makeup, this illustration, just to highlight here, is 75% of our district budget is made up of salaries and benefits, which makes it the key driver of our general fund and operating budgets around the district. Other pieces that make it up are purchase services, largely driven by transportation, and then supplies, capital expenditures, debt service, and other expenditures that are made, that make up the general fund. On the food service side, revenues are projected to be under expenditure, or a little, under expenditures in 16-17, which is a planned deficit spend as we go into our capital projects and the extensive work we're doing around the bond issue that we passed back in November of 15. So Mary Mueller's leadership in here, we have some anticipated operating capital expenditures that we're going to have some equipment spend. Our fund balance is projected to be roughly right around 8%, which is healthy for a food service fund. We also are not looking at increasing fees for 16-17, which is a good place to be in regards to the food service fund. The Community Service Fund is another highlight as we move forward here. We're projecting a $61,000 surplus as we roll into 16-17. Our revenues are expected to exceed expenditures by just shy of $62,000 and putting our fund balance at around $71,000, $72,000 at the end of 16-17. We spent a lot of time around this fund to get us into a point where we are solvent, and that community fund is self-sustaining. Okay, the other funds, other major funds that we have, some activity going on, especially in the Capital Projects Fund and the Debt Service Fund, where we have funds in regards to the capital project, where we have $15,004,005 deficit spending for the year. That's in regards to the bond issue that we passed in January, or in November, and the bond sale that we had in January of 16, with the funds coming to us at the district in March. And we're showing that fund balance there in 630-16, and we're just a little bit over $25 million, and we're looking at spending about $15 million of that bond issue in 16-17. Internal Service Fund is made up of our self-insured dental and our self-insured medical, as well as our OPEB trust, and we're sitting in a healthy position there. And the Debt Service Fund is largely made up of our debt service amortization schedule as we move forward. So that is an overview of our operating budgets for, as we move into 16-17. I'll open the floor up for questions, and if anybody obviously has any further questions outside of here in the public, my contact information is on the bottom of the screen there with my email, and you can find my contact information under the finance portion of the website as well.
Well, just a comment of appreciation for the attention that has been paid to the budget and to improving some of these revenue sources and expenditures. And I mean, when we look at food service and community service compared to a couple of years ago, significant growth in the right direction. So just, just keep up the great work. You're looking forward and anticipating things and heading them off, and it's showing, it's paying off, as well as the staff who are directly managing those funds as well in the day-to-day.
Yeah, we greatly appreciate that feedback, and it ultimately goes back to those people that are working day-to-day to make sure our programs are remaining solvent and looking forward long-term.
And it also appears that this is a broad overview, but there is line item detail of this budget, and you know, as Matthew said, anyone would have access to that, as well as a list of assumptions, both for revenue and for expenditures, that entail every one of the revenue sources and expenditure sources for general fund in particular.
Is that detail automatically posted on our website, or is that something people request?
The assumptions will be posted under the finance website, along with this budget presentation and our summary, as well as those assumptions. Will also be, as we move towards the levy timeframe, we'll have a budget publication that's required by MDE that will be up there as well.
And they can find that just at the Fridley Public Schools?
Fridley Public Schools website on their finance department.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Matt.
Of course, before you sit down, you might as well. Our next item is the actual motion to approve the budget. I don't know if there's anything else we need to speak about it, unless you wanted to go into detail on the individual little line items there.
I think we're good to go.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Lynn Blad to approve the 2016-2017 budget. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Our next item is a resolution, accepting the gifts. Every month, we're fortunate enough to receive gifts throughout the area, and every month we do have a resolution to accept those gifts to thank these donors. This month, donations to Stevenson Elementary School, the Target Take Charge of Education for an amount of $1,370.39. Donations to Hayes include $60 from Michael Paquette, Michael Peterson, $12, Deanna Roth, $90, and anonymous donor for $57.72. Donating to Fridley Middle Schools, again, the Target Take Charge of Education for an amount of $1,869.85. Scott O'Leary for $11.54, Stephanie Sharp $30, and anonymous donors in the total of And donating this month to the ALC, we have a Sam's Club donation of $25 from Darlin Johnson. Do I have a motion to accept these gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Sturt Event, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions? Yes, I know. Any other comments? If not, clerk, can you call a roll?
Delvo?
Aye.
Liplat?
Aye.
Aye.
Sampson?
Aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Our next resolution is with regard to the lease financing authorization.
So tonight, we have a lease authorization in front of you that's going to lease some custodial equipment and putting us in a lease purchase agreement that extends over a four-year period, that when we go back around at the end of it, we hope our cost of ownership is lower and we can refresh our equipment on a more timely basis as a district.
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Lynn Blad, to approve the execution of a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement and supplements thereto and related documents and certificates. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, could you please call a roll?
Delvo?
Aye.
Liplat?
Aye.
Sampson?
Aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Our third resolution for this evening is approving the Northeast Metro Intermediate School District 916's long-term facility maintenance budget.
So this is part of our membership with 916. They are allowed to levy as, through our membership, as part of that. This historically used to be called Health and Safety. It has now been funneled into the Long-Term Facilities Program, and it's about $8,000 for us in fiscal year 16-17. They are levying for two years, 16-17 and 17-18. It's about, district-wide at 916, it's about $273,000. That $8,000 is our portion.
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Sturt Event, to approve the Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District 916's long-term facility maintenance budget and authorizing the inclusion of the proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term maintenance revenue. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Delvo?
Aye.
Liplat?
Aye.
Mr. Riddell?
Aye.
Sampson?
Aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Our next resolution is a resolution approving agreement with the state of Minnesota, the State Minskew Board of Trustees, to provide supervisory services for students from St. Cloud State University. Dr. Philathman?
Yeah, this is a bit unusual. We don't normally bring this to the board for acceptance. St. Cloud has asked, and perhaps it's a new rule with Minskew, so we ask that you accept this resolution, and this would mean that we would be able to engage in student teachers from St. Cloud University. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Blad, seconded by Delvo, to approve the agreement with the state of Minnesota, the State Minskew Board of Trustees, to provide supervisory services for students from St. Cloud State University. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Delvo?
Aye.
Liplat?
Aye.
Sampson?
Aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Our next item on the agenda is a motion to discontinue the services, or some of our services with the Ties membership group.
So tonight, we have a motion in front of you to accept a letter with the purpose of discontinuing, attempt to discontinue our membership with Ties in regards to Ties Finance HR Pay Systems and Ties Data Systems Cognos effective July 1st of 2017. As part of this, we also have a written notification for Ties that we're going to discontinue our Enroll View piece that we've moved to Campus effective July 15, 2016. So we have this in front of you for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Blad, seconded by Delvo, to approve the discontinuation of services of the Ties membership. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up, we have a second reading and adoption of quite a number of policies. Amina?
Yes, this is the second reading of the following policies, 420, 506, 509, 516, 532, 596, 613, 616, 618, 620, 697, 698, 707, and 905. This is the second reading. There have been with some corrections and minor modifications and revisions. I submit them for the second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Sturt Event, seconded by Lynn Blad, to accept the second reading adoptions of the policies that were previously called out. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes of the school board business meeting and work session that was held on May 17, 2016, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absences, terminations, resignations, retirements, the annual Q-Comp report, casual employee salaries for 2016-2017, Superintendent Dr. Philathman's continuing contract for year two, a gear-up visit to Bemidji State University being held June 23rd and 24th, also a gear-up spring college campus tour to the Chicago area on August 16th and through 19th of 2016. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Sturt Event, seconded by Delvo, to approve the Consent Agenda of those items I had. Would like to just comment on, we have a couple of longtime employees that are believing us at the end of the month here. That would be Shirley Nelson, who if anybody has ever That would be Shirley Nelson, who if anybody has ever in the past two, three decades since 1969 walked into our high school, they would know who Shirley is. She's been with us and
Would remember.
Kind of the face of Fridley High School for quite a number of years. So we certainly wish her well. And also Bill Bogel, who's been with us for quite a number of years in several different capacities, will also be believing us. Any other discussion items? If not, we do have a motion and a second. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda passes. Our next item on the agenda is the written information, student enrollment. Dr. Philathman?
Yeah, in your packet was not only June 1st, but June 9th, which was the last day of school. So this is, this completes this year's grade level enrollment. And as Matthew may have said, we talked about it in the work session, we look to be able to be slightly above our revised budget number, which was 2987. We think we'll be close to 3,000 when we get our final numbers in August. And so I think we've had a very strong year in which we have maintained each grade level pretty, pretty well and in some areas, quite surprisingly.
Thank you. Next will be a first reading of a policy, 799 Nutritional Services Meal Charge. Matt?
Yeah, so tonight, we have a policy in front of you, policy 799 Nutritional Services Meal Charge, that is being modified for current practice, as well as getting in alignment with the use of online payment systems.
Thank you. Our next up will be reports from school board members, beginning with the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board meetings held May 18th, as well as June 15th. Marshall, were you able to attend the? You were not able, okay. Oh, I was there for the June 15th meeting. Most normally, over the last couple of meetings, it's mostly a wrap-up. The school year, we do a, reports from each of the individual groups there at Northwest to determine how things are going in the state of the collaborative. Probably one of the largest things that's going on with that, the state of the collaborative. Most of the programming is actually up this year. There was one that was slightly down, but they're going to be making some steps to see if they can turn that around. Most of that just has to do with timing of when they do some of the pullouts in the field, the field trips for that. I just found it wasn't necessarily always conducive to getting the students there to that programming. So they're going to be looking around ways to enhance that. The other big thing most recently is the folks at the Moundsview School District have put in a notice that they will be leaving the collaborative beginning in the 2017-2018 school year. They do have the option if they would like to stay. They certainly are welcome there and could rescind within the year. But as part of the standard bylaws of Northwest, they do have to give at least a one-year notice for that, to pull out of the collaborative. And they have given us that notice and that has been approved by the Joint Powers Board there. Next up, Schools for Equity in Education meeting held May 19th.
I will let Mary Kay talk about the same item because it was the same presentation than at the AMSD.
All right.
All right. At the Association of Minnesota School Districts and, or Schools for Equity in Education, C, we received a breakdown of the legislative changes from the 2016 session. They were broken into school finance changes and then educational policy changes. I'm not going to read the entire list. I'll just couple, touch on a couple of highlights. There's a voluntary pre-kindergarten program that's being put in place and applications for that are due on July 1st, if a district would like to get in on that, and our district will be doing so. They have slightly increased some funding for home visiting revenue and tuition scholarships for teaching assistants to help them attain a teacher licensure in Minnesota. They've expanded the Teacher Shortage Loan Forgiveness Program and some funding for broadband innovation grants around transportation. Two other pieces that many of our listeners may be interested in is there's expanded funding for Reading Corps, as well as Girls in Action Grants. Some of the highlights of educational policy changes, Minnesota Department of Education must create a form for opting out of testing so that if parents want to do that for their children, there will be a state form allowing them to do so. There are some new policies put in place regarding student discipline, regarding student-on-teacher assaults, removing students with violent behavior from the classroom, and student discipline work groups. Districts must now screen for dyslexia or convergence insufficiency disorder, and these students must be given alternative instruction. And the teacher licensure is now going to require an hour of suicide prevention best practices moving forward. And then finally, they're moving all the parental rights policies into one location within, within the Minnesota Department of Education. So it's easier for parents to find those than to be hopping all over the place. So those are the highlights.
Right, thank you, Mary Kay. Next up, the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting held June 21st.
Oh, that's this evening.
That's true. So you didn't know what's happening this evening? You're having two places at once?
It was taking place at the same time as our board meeting. It was, they were titling at a board retreat and it was a presentation on equity in education by the new equity director for the district.
All right, thank you. With that, we move on to important future school board dates. Our next Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting will be held July 19th. The work session at 5:30 in City Hall, Conference Room A, open forum at 7:00 PM in the Conference Room A, and then the business meeting here in the council chambers at 7:30 PM. Does anyone else have anything else for this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Lindblad, to adjourn the meeting at 8:11. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you.